All set, everybody? Yumi na bente nuebi, elisatoran guan is called to order. Uh, would, um, Senator Tenorio like to, uh, leave for a prayer, please? We need a prayer.
All right. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Your Lord, help us, this body, this legislature, to look after the needs of our people, to find the wisdom through you, to appropriate and to allocate the limited resources of our island for the greater good, and help us to work together as a team to try to agree, find consensus, and find our way through you. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Oh, um, Mr., uh, again, Senator Tenorio, would you please make motion to adopt today's agenda?
Yes. Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the agenda dated September twenty-second, two thousand and seven.
There's no objection. Okay. Senator Tenorio?
Ms. Speaker, I move that we waive items three and four.
There's no objection. Okay. Okay, we'll have a roll call. Here. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Senator Tenorio?
Ms. Speaker, I move that the Legislative Journal, September sixth to the twenty-second, be approved.
No objection. Oh, that'll be motion, that'll be a motion. No objection. Senator Tenorio?
Ms. Speaker, I move that Bill Number One Seventy-four E.C. be considered to have been introduced and receive its first reading.
Okay, no objection. Senator Tenorio?
Yes, um, Mr. Speaker, I move that, um, Senator, I'm sorry, Speaker Mark Forbes and Speaker Tonya Pinklow, Senior Senator, may excuse from these proceedings.
Okay, there's no objection.
Mr. Speaker, I further move that all commensory, congratulatory, and condolences, resolution certificates be adopted by the body and all names of the members of the body be added to the list of co-sponsors and further that the legal counsel be authorized to make such necessary technical corrections.
Okay, objection.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, Bill Number One Seventy-four E.C. pursuant to Title II G.C.A., Section Twenty-one oh three A, and Section Seven point zero four of Rule Seven of Yumi na bente nuebi, Elisatoran Guan Standing Rules, be certified as an emergency measure.
With that, um, I'd like to, if there's no objection. Senator Tenorio, I'd like to read the letter that's been passed out to the body and this is to all senators. Yumi na bente nuebi, elisatoran guan, one five five Hessler Place. Off a day in pursuant to the authority vested in me by Title II G.C.A., Twenty-one oh three A, and Section Seven point zero four, Rule Seven of Yumi na bente nuebi, Elisatoran Guan Standing Rules, I hereby waive the public hearing requirements and those prescribed under five G.C.A. Sections Eight one oh seven and Eight one oh eight as permitted by my authority as Acting Speaker of Elisatoran Guan and under the emergency required requirements issued by the Attorney General Opinion Seventy-eight oh two for Bill Number One Seventy-four E.C. An act making appropriations for the operations of the executive, legislative, and judicial branches for the government of Guam for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand and eight, making other appropriations and enacting miscellaneous and administrative provisions, I hereby certify that an emergency condition exists that threatens the public health and safety and that there are only eight days left in the fiscal year and no budget act for fiscal year two thousand and eight has been passed. The aforementioned bill will be heard by Elisatoran Guan on September twenty-second, two thousand and seven. Sejoz Masi, Edward B. Calvo, Acting Speaker. Senator, Senator Luhon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Speaker, I move that, um, that, um, saying the governor's veto on, um, substitute bill number sixty-eight, uh, vetoed bill, uh, substitute bill number sixty-eight be placed in the, uh, the voting file for the reasons of an override.
There's no objection. Senator Tenorio?
Ms. Speaker, we're on a second reading.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, um, resolve to the committee, the whole, move to resolve to the committee, the whole.
I don't know if there's no objection. Please, oh, we'll have one minute recess.
I got Timmy's.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, here we go. Committee, the whole is in order. Um, for the body's information, the rules will be substantially the same as they were in the previous. Um, I will recognize, uh, members in the order that I, that their hands are raised or otherwise their attention is brought to me. Um, and from that process, uh, we will begin, uh, discussion on the chapters, chapter by chapter. Um, there will be a five-minute time limit on each member to speak. Uh, and if necessary, um, in voluminous chapter or sections or chapters, uh, we will allow for a second round of, uh, discussion for another five minutes. Um, as you're all aware, this, uh, is, if, I think it's identical to the, uh, the, the rules that we adopted on the preceding, uh, bill. Are there any questions on the rules? If there are none, Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Again, Mr. Chair, most of the bill in front of us is virtually identical to, to the language and the measures that were, um, uh, adopted, uh, the, over the past week. So with that, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, to move to adopt, uh, section, chapter ones through chapter five.
Motion is to adopt chapters one through five. If there's no objection, no comments, so ordered. We are now on chapter six. On chapter six, Senator Espaldón?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add a new section, uh, to chapter six. Basically, because of the, uh, our solid waste situation, we, uh, it's very essential that we, we, we move forward on a recycling plan and a recycling effort. And one of the things that needs to happen is that this needs to have funding. So I'm, I'm moving to, uh, to add a new section to chapter six, which would be the approval of the rules and regulations by the Department of Public Works relative to the, uh, recycling revolving fund, which basically would allow us to collect funds.
On the motion, with no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Tina Rosemonia Barnes?
Sejoz Masi, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, um, this amendment is just to add a new sections to chapter six on the miscellaneous provisions and, uh, it's two sections, just continuing appropriation for, for Elisatoran Guan, the unexpendable balance of funds appropriated to Elisatoran Guan for fiscal year two thousand and seven is available, uh, to the Elisatoran Guan for expenditures in the fiscal year two thousand and eight, and also sections for continuing appropriation of the Office of Finance and Budget. Again, the expended, the unexpendable balance of funds appropriated to the Elisatoran Guan for the Office of Finance and Budget for fiscal year two thousand and seven is available to the Elisatoran Guan and the Office of Finance and Budget for the expenditure in the fiscal year two thousand and eight.
Okay. Um, one minute recess. Um, Senator Moni Barnes?
Again, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make, again, um, and, an amendment to the amendment, and after, um, number one on section, after the word appropriated, insert and available to the Elisatoran Guan.
Okay.
And then on the second, uh, item also, after the word appropriated, and then avai, and available to Elisatoran Guan.
On the amendment to the amendment, no objection. On the main amendment, no further comment, no objections, so ordered. All right, on chapter six, Senator Ishizaki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I want to amend Section Seven of, of chapter six. It's a section concerning volunteers and donations for Skinner Plaza, et cetera. I just wanted to add provisions to allow for donations to senatorial offices, and should donations of goods, materials, and services be made to senatorial offices, information regarding the nature of the donation, the cost of the donation, who made the donation shall be published on the official website of Guam Legislature. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? Senator Guthers?
I, I, this is a very interesting amendment, Mr. Chairman. I, I do have one question, though, for the sponsor. If he could, uh, let us know, what would he define as donations? Like, uh, if someone donated, uh, books to the, to an office or furniture? Wha- what, what do you mean by donation?
Senator Ishizaki, will you yield?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, donations could be any number of things, and I think we just want to be transparent and allow people to donate. Other departments and, and branches of government are, are allowed to receive donations. I want to make sure we, we clearly define the authority. And as, as it exists, uh, you know, certain properties that belong to the legislature are authorized to receive donation.
Senator Guthers?
Yeah, the only, the only question I have, and I, I appreciate this very much, is just, um, what if someone wanted to make a a financial donation to a senator's office? Has that ever happened, Mr. Chairman? I don't know, because I have not seen that happen. Usually it's the other way around.
The, um, the section, um, well, maybe Senator Ishizaki can, um, explain the third line, which speaks to where the donations are indicated to go to. Senator Ishizaki, would you like to, um, yield to the question?
Uh, third line? I'm not sure what third line you're referring to, Mr. Chair. Well, you know, Mr. Chair, any number, and I, that's a good question. Any number of donations can be received, and it's just to allow a mechanism to receive donations.
I, I, um, I, maybe we need, uh, legal counsel to help us here, because I'm just a little concerned about anything like a money donation. I think that would be an issue of some kind.
Right. There, there is an objection. Senator Guthers, um, are you, is that conclude your comments?
I just want clarification, maybe from legal counsel, conservatives.
Go ahead, confer with legal counsel, then. Um, Senator Pangalina objected. Senator Shimizu?
Well, thank you, if, uh, the good author would, um, you know, just, uh, can I answer? You know, the, the intention is good, like everything else. Um, even the road to heaven is filled with good intention. I am just wondering, um, we really need to operationalize this. What is, uh, you know, donations? This was specifically, uh, volunteers and donations for Skinner Plaza, Plaza de España, and the Guam Congress and buildings. I would prefer to just take out the senator that they should not get anything, because the other day I received a donation of pugua. Now, under the amendment, uh, that is being proctored by the good gentleman, does that qualify for me to put it on the webpage? Would, would you yield? I mean...
Senator Ishizaki, would you yield?
Obviously, if the donation was made to you as the person, I don't think...
No, as a senator, I came to my office and gave me the pugua to eat, that you ate today, too.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get any of your pugua, but if the donation was made to the office, uh, then, then it would be included.
Senator Shimizu?
And, and what are the penalties for, uh, uh, in, in this, uh, provision? I mean, like I said, there, there's a lot of good intentions. You know, I mean, there's a lot of good intention. I would just, if, if his intent is to, you just say that no senatorial office or senators is to receive any donation, whether it be monetary or, or, or anything, any legislative senatorial office, but it can be donated to the legislature, the branch. I mean, that would probably be clearer than having to, you know, um, what's the deal with, um, like, I have to put on my webpage that I got the pugua? Or, yeah, I'm being a physician, but it really is true. I did get, you know, even when I was coming in here. So, I, I'm just saying that while we're opening again another Pandora's Box by constantly micromanaging, you know, and so forth, I think that if they made the donation, even in furnitures, to some of the senator's office, they should have the ethical obligation rather than law to just report it on their own and not even receive it, because to have received it, that enumeration, you know, I, 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 I don't know where this is going. And so I wanted just to raise the consciousness that sometimes we deal with these kinds of stuff. What is the intention, how we are doing, and, and... So, thank you for giving me that, uh, time to, and I hope that, uh, the good author would, you know, maybe, uh, uh, absorb a little bit to make this more operational. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Senator Pangalina?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I object to the amendment. I just think it's too hard to distinguish the purpose of the gift. And I don't think that we should be putting, uh, that kind of, uh, placing individuals in that kind of situation. I think it is a risky and a dangerous precedent to do this. I think that trying to distinguish to the general public the purpose and the, and the, uh, manner of these gifts. The senator's office is an office that is able to do many things, and it should be very clear in terms of the motivations of those things. And I think allowing this type of activity to occur on a routine and, uh, basis just places too many questions in the public's mind with regards to the activity that occurs in this manner. And I think that that's, uh, uh, it, it's just, for me, you know, it's just, it doesn't appear to be, um, I understand the transparency and all that, but I think that the, um, trying to distinguish everything else surrounding that, I think is, is not, uh, is not going to be possible to the general public. And I think the prohibition of it would be just the best way to resolve the matter. Um, and current policy should continue. Thank you.
All right, there's an objection. Is there any further speakers? If none, as many as are in favor, please raise your hand. Sorry. Motion fails. Senator Ishizaki, on your second amendment?
Mr. Chair, you know, I wanted to add something to Section Twenty-six. It's regarding the Chief Medical Examiner. It's a provision in, in the current budget draft, uh, to allow an exemption for the, of the Guam procurement laws in contracting professional services, uh, in the absence of the medical examiner. And I, I just wanted to make sure that, that when the medical examiner does leave off-island, that he gets, uh, he properly notifies the post-mortem commission.
Um, yeah, I need, need any second, uh, this is my oversight, just a second. Let me in, uh, recess. Okay, committee, the halls, called orders. Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, I appreciate where the, um, the gentleman is, um, going with this, um, but there are some... I, I think we can resolve this at later time, maybe through different legislation, um, because I'm concerned about the ability first for the prior approval. If, um, something were to happen where our chief medical examiner has to be dispatched, um, for humanitarian assistance, if there was, um, you know, Lord forbid, uh, some aircraft crash or something like that where his, his services are needed, and of course, the government of Guam says, well, please go down there. You don't get prior approval, let's say it's in the summer and all the, um, um, those who are composed, the, um, Commission on Postmortem Examinations are not available, and you're not able to get the approval. You kind of have, um, catch twenty-two where you can't get service for a medical examiner, and there's not a lot of medical examiners available. Um, and, um, this is my oversight. I'll work with the good gentleman to try to resolve it. Um, but I think that this probably would be, um, best suited in a bill form, and I'll work with the gentleman, as I said, to, to look into this and try to find a resolution. But I don't think right now that this is probably the best way to go, and I, so I, I am forced to object, but I do appreciate the sentiments of the moving, um, the moving member. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, I can appreciate and I recognize, um, you know, there's a bunch of, uh, law enforcement officers that are in this room, and, and I think that we can all tell, give you the war stories of being able to have to go out to the scenes, and hopefully you get, you know, um, all, all the needed personnel and all the expertise that you can need to be able to, in, 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 I guess in very specific cases, some homicide, homicide case, you get the proper personnel there. And, and I can appreciate, and I know where the, where the move of this amendment is going, in that, you know, one of the things that we need to make sure is that, you know, you want to make sure that your ducks are in a row, that your t's are crossing, and your, and your i's are dotted, uh, as, as, as best you can be, because at a moment's notice, you can be gone, and you, you can be called out. So I can recognize where, 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 where he's, uh, where he's going with this, and I, and I can appreciate this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other speakers on the amendment? Uh, I raise an objection, so therefore, as many as are in favor, please raise your hand. All right, motion fails. Senator Ishizaki?
Okay, over two. Rory, how am I reading, Ro-Rory? This, Mr. Chair, this is regarding travel. You know, there's travel restrictions in, in chapter six, and, and, uh, there are certain exemptions for travel, and much of it, for law enforcement purposes, is for escorting prisoners. However, on occasions, uh, officers need to travel for investigation purposes, and I just want to make sure that that exemption is also included for travel. During my tenure, uh, if, if officers had to go to the mainland for investigative work, I always tried to piggyback on, on some federal training so that it'll keep the cost of government cost down, but sometimes investigative travel is necessary, and I want to make sure that's, that's also included.
All right, Senator Blas, and then Senator Shimizu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise in full support of this one, because you know what, he, the little story that the, uh, the author of this amendment had brought to you, when he said he was the chief of police, uh, when I was the home executive advisor, he used to be, he'd be, he'd have to, uh, travel on, under my funds. You know, and so, uh, although it did help in as far as me making sure that it didn't come out of the local coffers, but, you know, I, I can see and I can appreciate why this amendment is needed. Uh, you know, uh, crime, um, is, is, is not just confined to our little island. Unfortunately, uh, criminals have the opportunity of being able to get off as quickly as, as they commit the crimes. And this allows our law enforcement officers, or, 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 the agencies necessary to investigate this, they don't have to take a second look or, or, or step back to find out whether or not, first off, it's legal for them to go after this guy. Yeah, we take that impediment away from them, and they can go after him. The quicker we get him, the less crime they'll, they'll, they'll be able to commit. So I am in full support of this.
Me, too. Senator Shimizu?
Thank you very much. You know, I, I, um, would not want to do anything to, to deter, uh, the rapid response, like I mentioned earlier, even on the medical examiner. But on this part, here, I was just doing is a travel by law enforcement. The, the amendment is travel by law enforcement personnel conducting an official investigation. Then it says, and law enforcement personnel providing escort services for criminal detainees and so, return to Guam. That, that shows that the, um, law enforcement personnel, uh, that is providing escort services for the return to Guam. That assumes that, that travel would probably be, um, off-island travel, because it says return to Guam. So by extension, we're saying that also law enforcement personnel conducting an off-island investigation. You know, because you can travel, you see, um, by boat, by plane, by, by car. But what I'm trying to get at is that the original language says travel by law enforcement personnel providing escort services for criminal suspects. The other one, it says travel by law enforcement personnel conducting an official investigation. So I just wanted, again, to help it out and say if, uh, if we, if we all understood the implied travel means in the air, in the sea, and on the land. The other one was very clear, that is escort back to Guam. So, um, just want to make that as, uh, that it might be much more clear that the investigation is being done off-island. Food for thought.
Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise in full support of this amendment. Again, Guam being an island, and in the twenty-first century, uh, you know, we are a global society, and there is, again, the mass movement of people and trans, and, and, and travel amongst many places. And of course, Guam being Guam, uh, once, once you decide to, to leave this island, you're gonna go someplace, and you go someplace far. Um, I can just recall that there were several, um, counterfeit rings, actually, not counterfeit rings, yeah, counterfeit rings, uh, where you had Japanese tourists, uh, coming into Guam, and, uh, through either forged credit cards or counterfeit money, uh, there was purchases of, uh, of many goods in, in, um, some of our duty-free shops, and you were talking about pretty sophisticated, uh, uh, criminal organizations. And obviously, uh, because of this, these, these crime that occurs, uh, in Guam, uh, there's also a likelihood that with, after the advent of the crime, uh, there will be flight of, of, of those criminals. And, uh, with that, I think it's important that we allow for an opportunity for those officers of the law, those investigators, to be given the opportunity that if need be, uh, investigation would occur and follow where, where criminals have taken flight. So again, I just think this is a very good amendment, and I rise in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Pangalina?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I support the amendment. And, uh, unlike, uh, my good colleague from Inarohan, uh, I think for me, this one's pretty clear that it means off-island travel. And, uh, even if it's coming back from Dedito, though, I think we really still should, uh, allow them and, and reimburse them. But, uh, I, I do want to say that, uh, the clarity that is provided here, I think, is, is, uh, is sufficient and quite good. Thank you.
I agree. Senator Guthers?
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, uh, I have a amendment to the amendment. Very simple amendment. Thank you. And that's to enter, uh, the following two words right after the item E designation. And the words are off-island travel by law enforcement personnel conducting an official investigation, et cetera, et cetera. Oh, so it's already there? Okay. I just was trying to help Senator Shimizu.
Yeah, I think it's in the section above.
Okay, I withdraw my amendment, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there are no further speakers, if no objection, all right, motion carries. Um, Senator Calvo, on a motion with respect to chapter... I'm sorry, are there any other amendments of this, um, chapter? All right, on a motion with respect to chapter seven, eight, and nine.
Again, Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, that, again, being that most of the, the bill we have in front of us is identical in nature to the bills we had addressed, uh, in the earlier week, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, oh, wait a minute, uh, to approve chapters seven, eight, and nine.
On the amendment, Senator Respechio?
Mr. Chairman, on, uh, chapter seven...
Mr. Chairman, on, uh, Chapter Seven, uh, I believe, uh, motion is in order by the Oversight Chair of Public Works to delete Section Sixteen and if you'd move it at this time. Page one thirty-two.
Um, so just a moment. Senator Calvo, will you withdraw your amendment, your motion at this time?
I, I withdraw my amendment.
All right. The motion withdrawn without objection. All right. Senator Espaldon, we are on Chapter Seven.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to, uh, basically move to delete Section Sixteen of Chapter Seven.
On the motion? Without objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion on Chapter Seven? All right. Senator Calvo, on your original motion?
Again, Mr. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ma- move to, uh, adopt, uh, Chapters-
To approve?
To approve Six, Seven, Eight.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry, I think it's Seven, Eight, and Nine.
Seven, Eight, and Nine.
All right. On the motion? If there are no objections, so ordered. We are now on Chapter Ten. Senator Shimizu? Um, okay, thirty-second recess. Um, are there? Senator Shimizu? Your five minutes begins now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what I will be doing, I will be proctoring, uh, at least seven amendments to, to Chapter Ten. The First Amendment, uh, if everybody has a copy, uh, this is delete, uh, Section Fifteen Twelve Point One A in Chapter Ten, Section One of Bill One Seventy-four and replace with the following subsection Fifteen Twelve Authorization to Issue the Bonds for Deficit Financing. Authorization of the issuance of bonds, the Governor of Guam is authorized to issue one or more serious bond of the Government of Guam as provided in this section in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed the amount necessary to provide one hundred and fifteen million dollars for the payment of the authorized expenses listed in subsection K and so forth.
Um, so my, my amendment is to delete Section Fifteen Twelve Point One A in Chapter Ten, Section One, um, which is on page one forty-six. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Um, that disposes of the First Amendment.
Okay, uh, my Second Amendment, uh, is again, uh, to delete subsection Twelve Point One K in Chapter Ten, uh, Section One of the Bill One Seventy-four and replace with the following. And it's in Section K and it, it's, it's the use of the proceeds from the sale of the bond, um, and I can, uh, dispense reading all of that, but it also comes just down to I and it's the cost of living adjustment to finally and permanently implement and discharge the obligation on, in the settlement agreement entered into between the Governor of Guam and the Cola class as ordered by judgment in Rios versus Camacho Superior Court, Case Number S P zero two zero six dash three.
All right.
In the amount of ninety-two million and in subsection Two I's, uh, the two thousand and five and prior year individual and corporate tax refunds of twelve million dollars. Uh, subsections up, uh, Three Eyes Healthcare Capital Improvement Projects at the Guam Memorial Hospital in the amount of eleven million dollars, which is a cumulative total of a hundred and fifteen million dollars.
Um, on the amendment, no objections, no further comments, so ordered. That disposes of the Second Amendment.
Thank you very much. Trying to find number two.
Senator Shimizu, are you moving the next amendment? All right.
Well, it just federal order. Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to add a new Section Seven on the Chapter Ten to read as follows. Is it now at Six? We've, we've changed our number so many times and we can allow legal counsel to. I have, uh, add a new Section Seven in, you sure now you-
Senator Shimizu, your amendment says Six. So your motion will be to add a new Section Six and to renumber the, the remaining sections? Is that correct?
Wrong number, yeah. It's to add a new Section Six on the Chapter Ten to read as follows.
Yeah. No, no need to read the entire thing, it's very voluminous, um-
But I want to insert here, uh, the, just in terms of the format, that we underline, um, fair market value.
Do you have that in writing, Senator?
Yes, I do.
Does the clerk have it?
I can give it to the clerk.
If the clerk has it, then that should be sufficient.
Thank you, so can the clerk-
On the motion to add a new section and to renumber the subsequent sections, if there are no objections, no further comments, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On the Fourth Amendment, Senator Shimizu?
Thank you very much. Add a new, uh, Section Sen- Seven on the Type, Chapter Ten to read as follows. Um, I have the amendment in our hand-
Yes, we have the amendment.
-to redact and strike out, I have it here, it can be given to the clerk again.
So long as the, yeah, so long as the designations for strikeout and underline are proper and given to the clerk. On the amendment to add a new Section Seven and to renumber the subsequent sections on Chapter Ten, no further comments, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
On your Fifth Amendment, Senator Shimizu?
Mr. Chairman, this, this is to add a new, uh, Section Eight on the Chapter Ten to read as follows. Section Eight, repeal of the aggregate tax valuation subsection Twenty-four One O Two, Parenthesis One, Article One, Chapter Twenty-four, Title Eleven, Guam Code Annotated is hereby repealed.
On the motion, no objection, no further comment, so ruled, so ordered.
On my Sixth Amendment, um, Mr. Chairman, this is to add a new subsection Nine to Chapter Ten to read as follows.
Everybody has the amendment?
Yes, and everybody, and they can give this to the clerk.
All right. On the amendment, no objections, no further comments, so ordered.
My, my last, uh, uh, Amendment Seven, lucky Seven, is to add a new Section Ten, Chapter Uh, Ten to read as follows. Section Ten, procurement of financial services.
All right. On the amendment to add a new Section Ten, no objections, no further comments, so ordered.
Thank you.
Um, just to, give me a thirty-second recess. On the matter of Chapter Eleven Severability, is there any further comment? No objections? All right. That disposes of the chapter and the bill. Is there a motion from the body?
Motion to rise.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Move, uh, for a motion to rise with, uh-
From the Committee of the Whole?
From the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation to pass.
On the matter of Bill Number-
On the ba- matter of Bill Number One Seventy-four E C.
And to place-
And to place it on the third reading file for voting.
That's correct. All right. On the motion, without objection, we will take a minute to rise from the Committee of the Whole and resume the session.
Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Committee of the Whole has risen on the matter of Bill Number One Seventy-four and is introduced by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce, and Economic Development and further amended, uh, by the Committee of the Whole with all, uh, um, amendments intact with the recommendation to do pass and place in the voting file.
And if there's no, no objection? Okay. Senator Tenorio?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed to the voting file for purposes of voting and return to motions.
No objection. Okay, we are now in the voting file. On third reading, we're in the third reading file.
Okay, is it Bill One Seventy-four?
Okay. Okay, Bill One Seventy-four. Okay, Bill One Seventy-four, roll call.
On Bill Number One Seventy-four E C, introduced by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce, and Economic Development, an act making appropriations for the operations of the executive legislative and judicial branches of the Government of Guam for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand eight, making other appropriations and enacting miscellaneous and administrative provisions.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Shizaki?
Yes.
Senator Luan?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Speaker Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Palacios? Senator Simisso? Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Minko? Senator Wampin? Senator Espaldon?
No.
Senator Shizaki?
Yes.
Senator Luan? Senator Shizaki? Senator Luan?
On Bill Number One Seven Four E C, there are ten yays and three nays. Bill One Seven Four E C has been passed by the body. We, we- On vetoed Bill Sixty-eight? yays and two nays. Vetoed Bill Sixty-eight notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, I have a roll call.
Vetoed Bill Number Sixty-eight E C is substituted by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce, and Economic Development and amended on the floor introduced by J. A. Luan, Edward J. B. Calvo, Frank F. Blas Jr., and others. An act to mandate the issuance of certificates of claim to Cola awardees by adding a new subsection Six Four Zero Four D to Title Five, Guam Code Annotated. Said act to be known as the Cola Relief Act.
Roll call.
Senator Blas?
Senator Blas?
Senator Calvo's?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon? Speaker Forbes?
Senator Guthertz?
Aye.
Senator Shizaki?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Luan?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Speaker Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Shimizu?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Minko?
Yes.
Senator Wampin?
Yes.
Senator Blas? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Speaker Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Senator Wampin?
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Senator Wampin?
Senator Pangolinan, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Senator Wampin?
We have standard ready.
yays and two nays. Vetoed Bill Number Sixty-eight has been duly passed and overridden by Minabitan Webi Nasartur in Guam. Let's ca- let's call for a brief, brief recess.
We are in motion. Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, uh, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, move vetoed Bill Fifty-three to the voting file for the purpose of an override and after the voting, return to motions.
Okay, there's no objection? Okay. On vetoed Bill Number Fifty-three- Not withsta- On bill number fifty-three, vetoed bill number fifty-three? Notwithstanding objections of the governor? Roll call.
Vetoed bill number fifty-three E C is amended by the author, introduced by V.C. Panglinen, Frank F. Blas Jr., James V. Espaldon, and others. An act amend section five one one zero two and section five one one zero six of chapter fifty-one of title eleven, Guam Code annotated, relative to expediting payment of income tax refunds.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
I'm gonna try that once. Pass.
Senator Espaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Suzuki? Senator Luhan? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Panglinen? Senator Respecho? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Pinko? Senator Wampin? Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon? Senator Suzuki? Senator Tenorio? Senator Blas?
No rush, you got two minutes.
Senator Espaldon? Senator Suzuki? Senator Tenorio?
The vote on vetoed bill fifty-three E C? We have ten yays? And three nays? So notwithstanding the objective, object, uh, objections of the governor on bill, vetoed bill number fifty-three? Has been overridden by Isla Turra, Guam. Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
You're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we, um, adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
There's no objection? Okay. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.